Chris is on that too.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Ed to order. The emergency exits are to the rear, the right and left of the room. Ms. Frantil, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Toman.
Here.
Mrs. Maskel.
Here.
Mr. McLaury. Mr. Wells. Mr. Van Shack.
Here.
Mrs. Gage.
Here.
Mr. Mooney. Dr. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Behringer.
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge. The pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th, 2021 board meeting and the minutes for the May 25th, 2021 board meeting.
So moved.
By Mrs. Gage, is there a second?
No, second.
Second, is that Elena?
Yes.
Any discussion? None being heard. I will call for a vote. All who favor say aye.
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 Public recognition. Mr. Ursig, do we have anybody online?
We do have two comments, but no reading this.
And then as a member of the public, if you have any comments.
Alright, so the first comment we had submitted today is from Juliana Miranda. Hello, my name is Juliana Miranda, mother to three children within the Sorgetes School District, two in elementary school and a sophomore in the high school. I have children who have seasonal allergies and asthma. With all this masking, it has compromised each acute health issue that I would normally have no issue getting under control with an antihistamine or an asthma pump. My kids and other children are suffering. It is so unhealthy for them, as well as adults, to continue compromising our immune system. Now with this heat, our children are suffering even more in classrooms without any air conditioning. My kids, more so recently, are so tired after school, often falling asleep in places they never fell asleep before, example, on the school bus or in class. They all have normal bedtime, so they get adequate sleep to be ready for the next school day. I worry about them overheating or possibly fainting with these recent days of extreme heat. Just because they have a bottle of water to keep them hydrated doesn't mean they're able to breathe with these masks on their faces in their classrooms that have no air conditioning to keep them cool. The heat is making them sweat the water out of them, dehydrating and increasing body temperatures. My children want to continue going to school to get their education and to have somewhat of a social life. It is now nearing the end of the school year. My children are preparing themselves to take their tests to end the year so they may excel to the next grade. Unfortunately, my children are unable to focus correctly with the heat and mask wearing. This is frustrating them, as well as myself, that it has come to me and other parents to make their voices heard about the issue of the mask worn under these terrible environmental conditions. This is literally a form of child abuse or neglect on the school. My children's environment for most of the day is six hours in school, four days a week, during the time the heat is most extreme. The advice given to our children is to tell the teacher. The teacher then sends the student to get a water refill, or they are sent to the nurse. The kids just need to breathe. Their bodies aren't regulating properly due to insufficient air quality. Breathing in the carbon they are expelling from their lungs, stuck within their masks. Many adults are suffering from this as well, but my major concern is the future of my children and their ability to finish their school year breathing without restrictions. I believe it's best to lose the mask during these extremely hot days instead of the possibility of heat stroke. The plan for wearing, the plan for masking when warmer weather started wasn't thought out. Why is it so? Why weren't repairs made to all schools within the district for any air conditioning issues before the heat came? What will be the plan, other than sending them to the nurse or water bottle refill? Thank you for your time. I hope to hear some type of plan to get rid of the masks soon. There was a second email submitted. This is from Ryan and Brittany O'Toole to the Sorgetes School Board of Education and all else whom this may concern. After 14 to 15 months of tolerating and even commending at times the Sorgetes Central School District in handling of this pandemic, this sorgetes family is now drawing a line in the sand and taking action on what we can and cannot accept to keep our children enrolled in Sorgetes Central School District. As you may well know, there has been much objection to the mandate of elementary children wearing masks in the unconditioned buildings. Quite frankly, the district, county, and state should, should, should be authority that leaves you and the parents and taxpayers of our local communities helpless to providing fundamental, basic, and constitutional rights to our children's healthcare decisions and welfare in the school setting. Beware that lawsuits against the offenders of our children are only a matter of time and action is, it is in development. This is the time for the school board and land, like other school boards on Long Island, on the right side of history, for sovereignty, health, and freedoms for our children. Otherwise, may the school board be in store for consequences to come in the months ahead. Legally, in decreased enrollment in your district and perhaps the future of the board and budget as districts in Southern Dutchess County and Long Island have wasted no time to already start doing this past election. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter. And on behalf of the many other medical freedom fighting parents in the community of Sorgetes, welcome you to what is only the beginning of the communication between us and the school board in the fight we face ahead. Thank you.
Many members of the public present wish to address the board? If not, we'll move on to presentations honoring. Mr. Reinhardt, I'll turn that over to you.
Bob, can I say something? It's Sue Gage.
Hold on.
Go ahead, Sue.
I'm getting a lot of text messages that people are struggling to get on, you know, the public. So I don't know if anything can be checked, but they're saying they're trying to log on and they're not able to log on.
Okay.
So just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak, ma'am?
Yes, I read in that blurb and then I did a little research on the background of this program, which made me even more worried about its infiltration to the community's curriculum. So I, then I even wondered, with all this background and all, is this a monetary thing? Although if it was something I thought of great value, I would never complain. But I did wonder what the actual matter entails. Time spent with the children doing things regarding diversity and racist inclusiveness and all this subject matter. So I'm here to ask, can I please have an answer?
You know, I think the main principle, and again, as the Board of Ed, we're like at the 30,000-foot level. We're kind of seeing things from a broad perspective. And we have our administrative staff that we task with carrying out the goals. But I think the bottom line is we want all our students to be tolerant of one another. And-
Well, that's what all parents would like their students to-
Right, so I don't think-
That was nothing new.
I don't think we're that far off. I think there's a lot of language on, about diversity, about racism, about anti-racism. And it can get confusing. But I think our bottom line is we want students to be tolerant of one another so they can grow up to be productive citizens in the community. And it's really nothing more than that. We're not looking to spend, throw money at things that we're not sure of. You know, we, we're trying to do the best we can. We all, our board members sit here on a voluntary basis. We're all members of the community. So, you know, we want what's right for the kids. We're not coming in from the outside trying to impose something for our political will. We're just looking at, you know, what's the best way to get the most amount of our students educated through the school system so that they can reach their full potential? You know, whether it's to go to college, to have a satisfying career, you know, to raise a family, any of those things.
Interrupting, but I wrote two letters already and I've been given that similar response. And it's not why I made the effort to come here tonight. I thought perhaps if I came in person, you would realize. And I think there are many in the community who either didn't read that, have no idea. And I'm not even sure now, as you speak to me, is the program in the curriculum? Is it truly part of the school system now? Is it in fact going to-
Sure, yeah. I think there's a confusion about it being a curriculum program or it being a lens in the way we teach. When I think of inclusion, I say, does every child in this district given the same opportunity for success? So how many AP classes are we offering and are they offered to everybody? Does everybody have an opportunity in fifth and sixth grade to get into that track?
Excuse me again, with all due respect for your time that you volunteer and for your credentials to be here in this position, that isn't what parents expect when we send that you come up with all these other things. You can stick to basics. Basics for getting them, they will do fine without all this. Their home environment will bring to the school the values that parents want to have for their children to learn and pass on and use when they're encountering other children. I feel like this is a lot of semantics. And it's really, again, who decided? Was there a vote? I am just asking that very simply. And I am getting all this, if you don't mind, great little responses, but nobody's answering my question.
But I think it's not a curriculum.
There isn't a curriculum.
It's not a program.
There's a perspective and conversations we're having about history, math, English, and opportunity for all the children in the district, all the children in the district.
Well, when they talk about equity, I know that that is not talking for meritocracy out of the rest of the school system as life goes on. That is not what it's saying. And you may say this as often as you please, but I have a feeling many people, including myself, would be not happy that you are doing this. And you still haven't said, alright, so it is, whether you call it part of the curriculum or a facet of the curriculum, it's still something that will be focused on. Something that takes them, they already lost a year and a half. They haven't been able to come back to school. And now we're going to have like all this other little, I see it, I see it-
So you're suggesting we don't discuss diversity?
I don't think there was a need to discuss diversity.
I think that's part of the problem, but I'm not going to talk anymore. I don't know for, I don't know-
And for the sake of time, I would urge you to make an appointment, maybe sit down with Mr. Reinhardt and/or myself, and we would be glad to spend an hour or so with you, answer all of your questions, go into much more detail than we can tonight to try to see if we can have a meeting of the minds on this. Want to persuade you of anything, but I think you could use some more information on this. And you came to us seeking that tonight, and I want to be able to give that to you. But I'm not sure, you know, we didn't take a vote saying we want diversity or we didn't want diversity. That's, that's not how it worked.
Well, you certainly must have taken a vote on a specific program that will be-
We take votes on approving textbooks. We get presentations on curriculum. We have a school principal here tonight to tell us what's happening at their particular school.
I researched the people, the books, and all the materials that are being used. If those materials and they have to have training things for the teachers and the administrators, this is, this is something that is being much more than just attitude towards the children and amongst the children.
I understand your concern. It's not about attitude towards the children. It's about, we want students to be tolerant. We want students to understand that nothing's going to hold them back. I don't want one student because of their nationality, their color, their skin, what they identify as, not have the same opportunity as anybody else. And that's kind of what we're saying. Equity is making accounts for somebody to make the playing field level. We want a level playing field for everybody. We want equality for all students so that any student who comes into the Sorgetes school system has the same opportunity to succeed, access to all the methods. Reinhardt referenced the after-school program. We also have things because of the pandemic for kids to catch up. The board took a vote and they approved a credit recovery program. The board took a vote and approved a night school program so that students can catch up. We're very much focused, especially on our seniors who are about to graduate, may have missed credits or are failing right now because of the pandemic, so we can get them through. So again, I'd urge you, contact the board office, contact Mr. Reinhardt's office if you want. I would be glad to sit down with him and you and show you what our curriculums are, what our programs as far as you're concerned about diversity are, and hopefully come away with something that you can have a better grasp on. I appreciate you coming here tonight, looking for knowledge on things and looking for questions to be answered. But it would take a lot if we went to show you everything in place, we wouldn't get done with the meeting tonight.
Well, that's why I wrote twice and I got a very polite note, but it didn't answer my question. It didn't even acknowledge-
I understand that, I-
That's why I finally decided to try-
Okay, and I'm saying, sit down with us and we will take whatever time it takes to answer every question that you have.
Okay, and, and when I do, I'd like to see what this, whatever you want to call it, what it entails for the children. Are they given worksheets? Are they given things that they are going to utilize?
Sure, take, have as many questions as you like and we will sit down and try to answer them for you.
That would be considered a program of distraction to their other curriculum, which are far more important than some of these social changes people want to make in the school system. That should be something left to parents. And I, I thank you for your time.
No problem, and hopefully we'll see you again.
But I still haven't been told who voted on it. Was the community given any notice? Because I missed it if it was.
Okay, and I think we told you we didn't have a vote necessarily. This is part of our focus. But come in, I urge you, make an appointment through Mr. Reinhardt's office. We'll answer every question that you have.
Well, I think a program, from what you're describing and what I'm reading about, the people who are administering the program here, I think it required input from the community. And that, I will leave you with that. For your courtesy, I thank you.
Okay.
I would like answers to that. And I also have a feeling that this is probably, has a monetary value that would be in our, our community, is certainly not a upscale. So I'd be curious what that monetary-
We're an open book. We'll give you any monetary value involved.
When I come-
And also, Mr. Reinhardt, I'm not sure if you were, has been having a series of town hall meetings with the community. You're more than welcome to participate in those. Hopefully, after June, the end of June, we can go live so we can have more people here in person. You know, personally, I miss that aspect of dialoguing with members of the community. And I want people to have answers. It's, it's not a mystery or anything like that. We want people to be informed. We want people to ask questions. We might not always agree, but we want to have understanding. There's been a lot of talk in the media about programs regarding diversity and equity, and there's terms flying all over the place.
It's more than terms. There are sheets I've witnessed. I've read about it in the paper. I have done research on it.
And I understand that. What, what you might have read, you have read in the paper might not be what's taking place here. That's why I would want you to come in and see exactly what we're doing so that you can have some peace of mind.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't you call-
Yeah, please, anytime you want.
-the secretary's office.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Do we have anybody else, Mr. Ursig? Okay, then I will turn it over to you, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you very much. As you know, we haven't been able to have a lot in person since last March. So Ms. Pam Murphy, my secretary, put together a slideshow of all of the retirees and people that have been granted tenure since last March. She did a great job on that. Mr. Toman and I were talking. We're hoping to have some type of a reception in August, our last board meeting before the school year starts. We'd like to have something in the cafeteria if things open up. But we didn't want the school year to end without recognizing these people. And Dan's going to try to show the slideshow for us right now.
Sound?
Sound, yeah.
There is sound.
It's not good, I'm sorry. There we go. There you go.
She was one of my students.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you to Pam Murphy for that, putting together that presentation. Hopefully, we can, like Mr. Reinhardt said, be together and celebrate in person one day.
Okay, next, last year, Mr. Spears was recommended for nomination to the Oldskine School Board Association. And as you know, last year, we weren't able to do anything. But Jayden is here tonight to acknowledge the recipient. Thank you, Jayden, for joining us.
So tonight, so last year, or, yeah, years ago. Two years ago, Coach Spears had passed away. He was an avid community volunteer for the youth of sports. I had the honor to speak on behalf of him here at the Board of Education meeting, where he was nominated. And here's a little blurb I had written that was published into the brochure. So I'll read this. Jim Spears was a veteran of the US Army, a graduate of Sorgetes High School, class of 1981, and an invaluable Sorgetes community volunteer. When someone mentions the name Jim Spears, a common theme emerges. He was a dedicated individual and a family man within the Sorgetes sports community. He dedicated much of his life to the Sorgetes baseball community, coaching teams and all-star teams for the Sorgetes Little League for more than 30 years, and serving as a league's president. He used his love for the game to help to mold hundreds of Little League players into the men and players they are today. He was known for his big heart and even bigger personality. You were lucky to call him your friend. Other than him on the Sorgetes Little League, as the Sorgetes Little League president and community volunteer, he was also part of the security staff of the Town of Sorgetes Parking Recreation Department. If you didn't see Jim anywhere else in the community, you saw him at his second home, which was Cantone Field. Just last year, the Sorgetes Little League dedicated a field to his memory, as well as Mr. Joe Martin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jayden. Ms. Canapico?
I'm sorry, I just, there is no YouTube streaming. Is that?
No, there should be.
I'm going to do a few YouTube minutes then. Reporting for the meeting is, it's going, and I'll get out and post it later.
Okay.
Okay, I just, okay.
Alright.
Great, thank you.
You're on.
Come on, okay. Well, first I have to say, Pam did an awesome job. And so many of the high school people were my colleagues for many years. And it's so hard to believe that they're already retired. But I'm right behind you. So-
Come on, can I just make sure, can everybody here go on at home? The board members that aren't here?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Do you want me to keep this on or?
No, but if you want to, you could sit here, closer to the mic or whatever, you're more comfortable.
On camera also.
Sorry?
If you sat by the mic, you'd also be on camera so the public could see you.
You could sit in one of these nice chairs. Or no, you've got all your stuff right there.
It's okay. I'm very flexible. Where do you want me?
There's a microphone right here if you want to stay right there.
Very good.
And you could, if you want to sit in one of the big chairs, you can, so you, you got a table in front of you.
Okay.
Better yet.
Better yet, right?
I can get up.
Sit at one of the big chairs. Big blue chairs. Doki-doki. It's one of the perks of the job.
Alrighty, so good evening, everyone, and board members, Mr. Reinhardt, thank you for having me. Thank you, Mr. Ursig, for being in charge of my slideshow. So for the past 15 months, we've been on a roller coaster throughout the United States, not just here in Sorgetes. We were remote, then we came back to school hybrid, and then we were remote again, and then we came back to school hybrid. And then Mr. Reinhardt and the board discussed the possibility of bringing students back to school slowly, which we did, and for Cahill, it worked out wonderfully. So right now, we have, out of 259 students at Cahill Elementary School, 235 are back four days a week. So that is 90% of our students are back in school, and we're thrilled for that. There's, there really was nothing sadder than walking into a classroom and seeing maybe only two or three students present. It just, it's hard to explain that feeling, but it just wasn't how, it's not how it's supposed to be. So I'm really glad that we have 97, we have 90% of our students back here at Cahill. So to discuss our district goal of student achievement, the district is dedicated to educating the whole child. And we work with everyone to make sure that we have meaningful programs and all students are able to reach their full potential. So at Cahill, we have building grade level teams. We have grand rounds, which I'll explain in a little bit. And we have district grade level team meetings, at least each grade level, at least once a month. We have social, emotional daily check-ins for children. We know in my building who our students are that we need to check on every day, that they're with us, and we make sure that they have what they need. We have our social worker and school psychologist, who also work with not only the students with whom they're assigned, but with any student who has a need on any particular day. We have ongoing review and assessment of needs. We use- We use and look at our different technology and instructional materials. Our teachers have progress monitoring to make sure that our children are demonstrating growth in both reading and in math. Our teachers have office hours in small groups on Wednesday, which is the remote day, so our children are in school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then on Wednesdays, that's our remote day, and teachers have office hours, and students are given work to do on their Google classrooms, and they meet with their teachers should they have questions or need extra help. And that's been going very well. Our current student achievement, so I have some other data that I wanted to share, but so what's on here is that currently, in kindergarten, where we have 28 students, 92%, which are 26 students, are passing both ELA and math. In grade one, all of our children are passing ELA, and 96% are passing math. We have 27 children in first grade. In second grade, we have 29 children, and all of our children are passing both ELA and math. In third grade, we have 24 students, and for ELA, passing ELA, we have 95.8% passing, which is 23 students, and 95.8% passing math, same amount. Only one student is at risk of failing. In grade four, we have a total of 35 students, and 97% are passing ELA, which are 34 students, and 94% are passing math, which is 33 students. In fifth grade, we have a total of 41 students, and 100% of them are passing ELA, 85% are passing math, which is the equivalent of six students who are at risk of failing. In grade six, we have 48 students, and 100% are passing both ELA and math. Our primary alternative learning program has six students currently, and 100% are passing both ELA and math, and I'm very proud to also let you know that our intermediate alternative learning program, which has eight students, everybody's passing both ELA and math. So, they're doing very well.
Can I ask a question about that, just a second?
Sure.
Is, so, they're just passing or failing, or is there a range in passing?
Oh, there's a range in passing.
Okay.
So, we're, so if we're looking at numbers, 65% and over would be passing. And for intermediate grade levels, they do use the percentages. But they're, our students at Cahill, I believe my teachers and my staff have worked phenomenally well with everybody, which is what I just wanted to share on other data that I brought. So, let's see, where are we? Starting with kindergarten, so, we have red is not yet proficient, now needs help. Yellow is like our tier two, where the students are passing, but they need more help to get to where they are completely proficient and doing really well on their own, which is then puts them in green. And in kindergarten, we have 64% of our children in green, and 36% in yellow, nobody at tier three, and I think that's incredible, considering we're talking about children who came to school, never having been in school, and have to learn school. All of our kindergartners, every year, learn school first, and these children had to learn something. So, their, their start was much different than anybody else's has ever been, and they've done so well. And I'm just so proud of them, because it, they, they only know what they know, and this is all, what they've done this year is all that they know, and they've done one heck of a job, so I'm really very proud of the children, the staff, and the teachers, for helping our four- and five-year-olds learn school this year. So, in first grade, I have 57% of my children in the green, forty, which is tier one, 43% in tier two, and nobody in tier three. Again, given the last 15 months, I think that's impressive. For grade two, we have 40% in tier one, which is, again, no RTI services involved, except for the teacher working with the children. Tier two has 57% and at-risk, or for tier three, or 3%, which is the equivalent of one student, so one student out of 30 in grade two. So, for tier, first, for third grade, 28 total students, 46% of them are tier one, 38% are tier two, and 17% are tier three, which is the equivalent of four students. In grade four, we have a total of 38 students. I have 23% at tier one, 60% in tier two, and 17% in tier three, which are the equivalent of six students. Fifth grade, we have a total of 43 students, 30% are in the green at tier one, 53% are tier two, and 16%, which are six students, are in tier three. And then we have grade six, which is a total of 49 students. Tier one are 67%, tier two is 15%, and tier three is 19%, which is the equivalent of nine students. And of those nine students, two, two of those students are students, one who just came here this year from Guatemala, speaks no English, and the other one just learning English, his second year here, and they are doing very well in our program. So, I just wanted to share that with you, because I just, again, I'm very proud of everybody for how hard they've worked this year, and our, and the growth is there with the children at Cahill, so we're very proud of that. So, these percentages are for the entire building on this page, so you can see that last year, at that January midterm iReady diagnostic, we had 55% of our students were on level, 33% were on tier two, and 12% were below grade level, and that was for reading, and then 43% on grade level for math, 57% on tier two, and nobody in the red in January of last year. So, then we move from those numbers into the middle section, which shows you the pretest in September, and as you can see, the students in the green went down, students in yellow, let's see, for, for reading, it went up, for math, it went down, and students in red went up for both reading and math. And then most recently, our percentages are there, so in our building, for reading, we have 58% of our students where they need to be, and for math, 48% of our students, and currently, all but 10% are in the yellow, which is tier two, and we have 10% in both reading and math below grade level. So, we've, we've done well. So, part of this student achievement is RTI. The RTI process, the response to intervention process, has helped support our students, and I just wanted to also talk about the fact that our faculty and staff have done so much to help support our students since last March, March of 2020. A lot of us had to learn new technologies, technologies that some of us, including me, have never heard of. I didn't know Zoom until March of 2020. If you said Zoom to me before that, it was a TV show when I was like eight years old, I think. You know, it's, it's new for all of us, and, again, my teachers knocked it out of the park, and so did my staff. I have teaching assistants who still work with students on Wednesdays for different students throughout the day, putting in a full day's work on a Google Meet or on a, on a Zoom conference, so everybody's really working very hard to help our children achieve. So, this year, in RTI math, we had 41 students identified for tier two. Three of those students were English language learners, and 19 students identified for tier three, and three of those students were English language learners, which was a total of 60 students. Since September, 23 students have dropped down a tier, so if they were in tier three, they're now in two, or quite possibly in one. If they were in two, they're in, in one. RTI is fluid, so students come in and out depending on these, the skills that are being worked on in the classroom at that, any given time. For ELA, we've had identified for tier two, 36 students, tier three, 20, which are a total of 56 students. And since September, six students have reduced a tier, and 10 students have tested out of RTI. So, again, it's a fluid process, and students come in and, and go out, so we may have been in RTI in October through December, tested out, and then maybe came back in in February. And that's with all of our, our buildings at, at the elementary level. So, addressing the gaps, we use iReady diagnostic, which is, we have iReady math, and we use the iReady diagnostic for both math and for ELA. It has taken over as a benchmark for what used to be the STAR assessment that we would give our students. The iReady program is really nice, it has resources for teachers, you can, teachers can go in there and print out a lesson for a specific student based on their specific need, and the admin, the admin, we're still learning the program, but the teachers are very familiar and are doing well with it. Everybody loves iReady math, so we're all very happy with that. Our teachers are also learning the Wilson Reading Program, K2, we use Foundations. It's a phonics program, and I, I am very familiar with Foundations. I had it in my other building and worked with it for six years before coming to Cahill, and when I came to Cahill, I said, "We need Foundations," and we had Wilson in seventh grade, and many conversations about having it at the elementary level, so it, over the course of a child's elementary schooling, the, the district will recognize the growth that's happening. Over six years at my other building, I saw the growth in students with their ability to read, because they were taught phonics through Foundations. Our special ed teachers are being trained, and they are for Wilson Reading Program, which is grades three through six, and they're going to turnkey train their colleagues. We use Fountas and Pennell and Rigby for running records, so we know what level a child is independently reading on, or, and/or needs to have instruction on. We have Writer's Workshop, which we've had now for quite a few years. We have Linda Zachmire, who is very well-versed in Writer's Workshop, and she works with us as a coach for ELA teachers, and this year, she did do a book study in the evening with some teachers, and I think it went very well. Teachers have used all of the Google platforms and are learning more. I don't think, in my career as a principal, I've ever had as many teachers requesting workshops at BOSI's as I have in the last year. Our teachers really ramped it up and have learned so many new things through Google Platforms and through other things that were offered through BOSI's that they could, in turn, work with the children on. The iReady diagnostics, use in reporting, we are continually learning about that, and Growth Mindset is a book study that we're doing right now with the administr, with the administrators, and we're looking to work more with that, starting in September, for the 2021, 2022 school year. And, of course, we have district grade level meetings and collaboration, and I know from talking to my teachers at Cahill that they really appreciate that time, and they appreciate the feedback. Collaboration and connection with Grand Rounds, so I'll explain Grand Rounds. I know that you've heard it from the other principals, it's not different at Cahill. I put up some pictures of the faces of our Grand Rounds team. I have RTI specialists, I have the ELA teacher and our math teacher, and our lead special education teacher, our school psychologist, and our school social worker, they're at every meeting, along with the classroom teachers for the specific grade level that we're discussing, and the special education teacher or co-teacher for that class. We discuss every student in the building. So, the teacher comes into the room, and we talk about each child and where they are at, not just academically, but socially, emotionally, and anything else that we need to know or we need help with. How can we best help that student to succeed? This started at Mount Marion many years ago, and it's, it's great that all the buildings are doing it now, because it's important that we all know all of our children. So, beyond our classroom walls, we have the student support on Wednesdays, which are the remote days. Teachers have their one-to-one Google meetings with students and families, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays at Cahill, we have after-school support. At Cahill, with, when I first arrived at Cahill, all of my TAs worked from 8:15 until 3:45. Cahill doesn't start until nine, so as TAs retired, full-time TAs retired, I was able to hire new full-time TAs, but with hours that would work best for student support. And so, I have many TAs now who start at 8:40 and work until 4:10, or 8:45, and work until 4:15. My aides, who are still in, in school from 8:15 until 3:45, they provide help for students who might need help in the morning. Parents are able to drop their student, their children off early for that support if it's needed. This year, the early, the coming in early help hasn't happened much at all, but after-school has, and it's helping the students improve specific skills where they are weak. We have family support, which is parent-teacher conferences. We have, for our students who are still remote, we have a materials exchange, teachers bring the material down, parents call, they come in, and we give it to them. We have, all of our students have Chromebooks, which was incredible that the district did that, so thank you to the board and Mr. Reinhardt for making that happen last year for our children. Everybody has been able to be connected, and if something goes wrong with a Chromebook, the parents know that we will, you know, bring it in, take care of it, and exchange, exchange it for them if they should so need. We've had staff outreach over the last 15 months, teachers, teaching assistants, myself, dropping materials off for students, whether it be textbooks, packets, for some children, it was treats, any materials they might need, gift cards if the family needed it. Our social worker has done home visits, and we have support services available for families by appointment. At Cahill, we have RCPC outreach clinic for outpatient, or, I'm sorry, not outpatient, but for families who, anybody in Surry's who may need some support with their family, we have RCPC there, and of course, at Cahill, I have the two RCPC classrooms, and I know that we've had a lot of outreach this year. For our district goal of culture, climate, and community, again, we have the grade level meetings, we have full staff, and then faculty meetings every month. We do our RTI We do our RTI and Grand Rounds meetings. We have school safety meetings, PTA meetings, which have all been on Zoom this year, and parent-teacher conferences and parent-teacher with student conferences or meetings as well. For celebrations, we have quarterly awards. We do grade-level celebrations, first grade, they, you know, story, and then they present it, and it's really sweet. It's a very big deal. And we have our collaborative between all four buildings, PTA events. So this year, we had a trunk-or-treat in October. For PARP this year, we all did a Hogwarts theme, Harry Potter, which the kids had a lot of fun with, and we're all working together on our sixth-grade moving-up ceremony. So the buildings are all pretty much working together and offering the same thing for all of the children. For communication with families, we have Cahill's webpage. We do newsletters, daily announcements, PTA Facebook page. We have the Google Classrooms, and of course, phone, email, and progress reports, as we've always had. And there's also the School Messenger, which the district office sends out messages for For safety and security, for that district goal, when I was hired at Cahill, I was asked to, "Please make Cahill safe." People were coming and going through all of the doors and not signing out. It was, you know, if somebody's spouse might drop by to drop them off lunch, they would be greeted at a side door, and that all stopped. So we've worked on our safety and security. And in the picture, you'll see my two door monitors, and they really do a great job. If it's somebody who isn't in our system, they will get their license and scan it through our system. So with COVID, of course, everything changed. I changed a few years back to have just one entry and one exit at Cahill, but with COVID, I had to have side doors utilized again because of the traffic flow. We would need to keep space between children. So every morning, my school nurse and my monitor and several TAs are at the doors, taking temperatures for students as they enter the building, as well as for adults. We, throughout, when children move through the hallways, it's, you know, we try to keep them so many feet apart. We rescheduled lunch this year, so students were having lunch in their classroom. And up until a few months ago, or a couple of months ago, they were even having recess, if you will, in their classroom. We've created it now. I created a playground schedule so that some students eat first, some students go outside first, and for the students who are outside, a specific class on specific days gets the actual playground equipment. So they're with their cohort on the playground. Well, maybe the other group is over playing soccer, not soccer, pickleball, or they're just, you know, running around like the children do. It's funny, because sixth graders were never really excited about the playground until this year. This year, the first thing they said was, "Well, why don't we get playground first when we go out? It's our last year here. We're in sixth grade." And I was like, you know, "My gosh, sixth graders have never played on the playground. They really haven't." So we gave them a time during the day that they go out, they get their mask break, and then they can go, one class at a time, to the playground, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So there's a schedule to help keep everybody safe during COVID. We are reminding children constantly, and adults as well, about safety precautions for COVID. And I think this year, given everything that we've had to work with, I think it's gone pretty well for Cahill. Before I end, I just really, I want to thank my secretary, Erin Vines. She has kept our, a daily count of who's hybrid, who's in school. Until, you know, a few months ago, families could go remote whenever they really felt the need to, so it was a constant flux of numbers. And every day, Erin's on it, and I really do appreciate that. I appreciate all of her help. And also, my custodial staff, they've really stepped up to the plate with making sure, all day long, things are getting wiped down. And that's, you know, obviously been since the beginning of the school year, and everybody's done a really good job and has worked very hard, and I really do appreciate that. Questions?
I just wanted to commend you. The achievement numbers are phenomenal, all things considered, going through a pandemic and just uncharted territory, so kudos to you and your staff. It was a very nice presentation to hear. Sometimes we don't always hear good things, but this is one that you can take home and say, "Wow, it's working."
Thank you.
Anyone else, virtually? Thank you, Ms. Canapico.
Mr. Reinhardt, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, who many of you may not know it, is the recipient of the High School's Principal Award for an Outstanding Senior, and you're going to give us a report?
So before I came here, I was actually at the sorbities varsity girls' cross game against Walkhill, or, not Walkhill, Highland, because they were the number-one seed. So they won their first semifinal game tonight, so they will move on and play Thursday back here at four o'clock. Yesterday, I was able to watch the girls' softball play Red Hook. They won, so they'll play Down and FDR tomorrow at four o'clock. And unfortunately, our varsity boys' baseball team lost a tough one last night to Walkhill, so that, our season's done there. I think that's all the sports there. First off, I'd just like to thank the board on behalf of me and Jillian Murphy for bringing us on here to do the student representative. It was a great, great, great time, being able to speak from the student voices and just always welcoming from everybody here. Soon enough, hopefully by, before the end of the school year, we'll make sure the next one comes present, and we'll let you know who will be on for next year. Couple senior things. Monday, June 21st, will be our senior picnic outside on the football field. It's a little different this year. We're doing a couple carnival games, so hopefully that'll be fun. We'll have food, and hopefully we'll just have a, be able to enjoy a great time before we go off on Friday, June 25th, for our drive-in graduation ceremony. That's pretty much it. It's at the final, final step of the road before we get out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, and thank you for being faithful in attending the board meetings and giving us reports. Board member remarks. Ms. Masco?
Thanks, Bob. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Mrs. Robbins for coming here tonight. I think that conversations are good. I also think change is good. I appreciate you speaking and saying, you know, your thoughts, and I want you to let you know, as an elected official, which I was elected to be in this position, I unequivocally do support EDI, the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. If we haven't had a vote, you know, I don't know if we have or haven't, we vote on so many things, but I do support it. And I support it because we're an educational institution, and it's our job and our responsibility to educate our children every way possible. And the only way we can do that is by learning and doing more. So I look forward to your conversation with the superintendent and the board president, because I really hope that you're going to get the information that you're looking for. And I also want to give you the answers that it looks like you so very much want, and I just wanted to let you know that that's how I felt. I'm glad to be here in person and see everybody, that you guys really exist. So thank you for letting me come in person, and that's all I have to say.
Any other board members? Mr. Wells?
I actually just wanted to thank you for the presentation. I thought it was really great, as Bob said earlier. It's kind of cool to see some of that good news coming out of this in spite of all the chaos that this year has been. And it's pretty awesome to see the teachers, the staff, and everybody kind of overcome all the obstacles that are put in front of them, and these students actually excelling through that. And lastly, Jaden, congratulations again, man. Like you said, kind of hitting the final stretch here. It has been a pleasure having you kind of come through here and give us the updates and keep us in the loop with what's going on with the, you know, the high school students. You know, I wish you nothing but the best, and I know you'll do great things just from what you've done in here, and I look forward to kind of hearing all the great things you do beyond sorbities.
Ms. Behringer?
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Oh, perfect. So I just, I wanted to really thank the administration, fellow board members, the teachers, the parents, the students. This weekend was probably one of the biggest examples of the massive confusion that has continued to come down from both the state and the federal government and the hoop.
We lost you.
You lost your audio. Nope, it's back.
Yeah, I don't know why, you've been cutting in and out, too. I think something's going on technology-wise today. But, so this has been an example, again, of
Wait, when she gets to the point.
Of where we have to continually respond, and our administration has done so. so much regards to the basics that we and require, that our government are requiring all districts to do. So I also consider the diversity and education required in our school districts. The final thing is the Ulster County School Boards Association Award for Jim Spears. I do hope that we can share the pamphlet that has all of the awardees, all the fellow friends of education, to really see that, yes, exactly, Katie, that publication to demonstrate that we are recognizing not just Jim Spears, but a number of Friends of Education, and to see the plethora and the demonstration. It's always amazing every year to see the amazing individuals in all our communities and what they give to education. Jim is such a missed individual. He gave so much, and it was not just on the baseball field, or it was in every day, the education that I know students, like all three of my children, felt from Mr. Spears. So I, these are amazing, truly amazing individuals. To be the full extent of the Friends of Education Award that's given out every year. And that's all for me.
Thank you. Any other board members? Okay, Board President's remarks. I wanted to, I talked with Mr. Reinhardt briefly before the meeting, and again, I want to just thank the community for their response to the confusing mask regulations. It seemed like it changed every fifteen, twenty minutes over the weekend. I know it created a lot of anxiety for the administrators and for some of the board members. One response was being prepared, then something else would come down from the governor's office, and something would come down from SED. I heard the parents' concerns in the public comments, and it's not easy. Our hearts go out to you. You know, it's unfortunate that politics sometimes gets in the way of common sense, but I thank you for bearing with us. As Jaden mentioned, we're in the home stretch, so we're getting there. The world right now is upside down. I think part of the concerns that were expressed regarding diversity and inclusion, I've, I try not to listen to the news, but occasionally, when I do, I've been hearing things like urging people to come to school board meetings, to run for school boards, to fight school boards, because they have all these different hidden agendas. I've been on the board for a while. I think it's been eleven years, give or take a year off, and I think without a doubt, the things that we heard from Ms. Canapico tonight about achievement for all students is why we're here. I can't speak for every board member, but I think we're all united. We're, we don't always think alike, but we try to achieve consensus, and it's a tough time right now. I think we have to have patience and understanding, even if there's somebody who comes to us with a position that's different from ours. It's not about necessarily arguing, it's about educating one another so that we can appreciate each other's perspective. And, you know, that's kind of my hope as we come out of this pandemic and the world settles down a little bit. There'll be more discussion and less division. So that's my remarks. We'll move to education curriculum. I'll entertain a motion for the textbook adoption resolution.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Masco. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Van Shaack. Any discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 I'll entertain a motion for the summer 2021 curriculum resolution.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Masco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gage. Any discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Item K Personnel, I'll entertain a motion for items K-1, K-2, K-3, That's it.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Masco. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Van Shaack. Discussion?
I just want to say congratulations to the teachers that got tenured, everybody that got tenured, and to the ones that are, you know, retiring. Hopefully, they enjoy their retirement. They put in a lot of hard work, and the last two years have been pretty difficult, to say the least. I'm sure it was probably added up to all those other years that they were teaching or doing whatever their job was at that point. But thank you very much, and good luck.
I want to give a special shout-out to Dr. Westinghouse. You know, I think if it was in our power to not accept your retirement, we would. But thank you. You came in, I think we talked earlier today, you came in at a different time, and we're kind of a bridge between two very different administrations, and I think you've helped to, you know, transition from Mr. Reinhardt and his team to come through, so we really appreciate your service. Any other discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 And we can officially congratulate those tenured.
Yes.
Yay.
Entertainer motion for Personnel, items L-1, 2, and 3.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Masco. Is there a second?
Second.
And by Mrs. Gage. Any discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Item N, Business Office Recommendations. I'll entertain a motion for items M, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 and 10.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Masco. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Haas. Any discussion?
So I wanted to thank everybody for the donations, because they were pretty substantial. That's great. Can I just get a little bit of clarification on number- Can I just get a little bit of clarification on number nine? No?
What would you like to clarify? The other one?
No. Just, is it, like, like the whole, is this, is this stuff that we, tell me why this is, why we're doing this again?
At the end of each year, I go through and I project out what our budget balance is going to be for the year-end, and this is my recommendation on what to do with the amount of, 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 of...
Gotcha. Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other discussion? Uh, Ms. Barringer, I see your hands up.
Yes, um, number five, surplus equipment. It talks about, uh, technology equipment various, but there's nothing attached to indicate what technology equipment various is being surplused.
Um, it's actually ages long. It's two-year, two-year worth of old and obsolete items. Uh, anything from, let's see, projectors, tablets, printers, scanners, PC, laptop, all old. Actually, I guess I could leave that to the machine.
So, when you say old items, are these unkeeping items?
Yeah, it's either replacements or they're just, like, we don't have any use for them anymore.
Right.
So, we kind of collect them all and then send them off to the, uh, the...
Is this something that we have to vote on today? Can it be held until the next meeting where we could get a copy of the list?
Why does it matter?
It's work.
Because, how, why it matters is because, um, we as a school board are, um, responsible for all of the, uh, equipment inventory and anything that is on there. And I trust what's on there, but at the same time, if there's ever a, a question as to what we surplused, and if it was an inappropriate surplus, then it would be on the board that we approved it without looking at it.
Talking about, like, for auditing purposes?
Yes, because we are, yes.
I do have it, and we can have that elsewhere. That's no problem.
Oh, yeah, I, I think the problem was like, uh, when we got the agenda on, uh, board docs, there wasn't a tab to look at it, where there was a tab for everything else.
Right.
So, you know, not, I mean, uh...
Yeah, we didn't get it. So, I mean, I mean, I just, or I'm going to abstain on the vote. I'm, I'm good either way. I can, I'll abstain.
Let's just move it.
Well, um, I think then we need to amend, uh...
The motion, right?
Motion to, uh, take off item five. So, it would be, I will entertain, see if I get this right, Ms. Fran Sol, the late-night challenge here. I'll entertain a motion to amend the previous agenda item to approve item M1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7, 8, and 9, and then table item 5 to a subsequent meeting.
And 10.
And 10.
And 10.
Does everybody understand that? Yeah.
So, you're amending the current motion, correct?
Yes, to take off basically five and put it on for next month.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, somebody want to make that?
I made that motion to amend.
Okay. Uh, thank you, second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Mascall, third by Mr. Van Shaack. Uh, any discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, uh, Board Action Discussion Items, uh, I'll entertain a motion for item N1, 2, 3, 4, and then, uh, 5 is a discussion item, so I'll entertain a motion for N1, 2, 3, and 4.
We need a motion to table number five?
Moved by Ms. Gage, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mascall, I missed that.
We need a motion to table five. We amended the motion to approve those other nine. Do we then need a motion to table five?
He included tabling.
That was part of the motion? Okay.
Oh, I didn't touch that.
Okay, so for the current motion items, N1 through 4.
So moved.
Dr. Haas, second by Mrs. Gage, discussion? None being heard, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Um, five face masks, discussion? Mr. Reinhardt, you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to give the board an update. Um, as you know, this, there was CDT guidelines came out last night, um, regarding the fact that the, um, during school, the mask would still be on, but they would be lifted for outdoor. Um, so as you know, with all the other changes, we required for public comment and input. And so, this morning, I sent an email, um, with that change, um, to our safety committee for feedback. I also sent the change to the board. I also sent that line to our reopening task force for their feedback. Um, I've already prepared the letter, so as soon as the board meeting is over, um, the letter will go out to the community that effective today, any outdoor event, masks are not required, but we can also allow anybody who chooses to wear a mask to wear one as well. Um, so the letter is already, I just wanted the board to be aware of that I've done due diligence as far as putting the information out to all of our subcommittees. Um, so as soon as we get a chance, that'll be posted on our website to let all of our parents know that any outdoor event, including athletics, masks are not required, um, effectively immediately.
Thank you. Um, any other discussion on that?
Can we finish the meeting outside and take our masks off?
It's amazing, in 2021, we have mask humor. Um, Audit Committee Report?
I don't have anything.
You have anything, Ms. St. Moore?
No.
Okay. Uh, Facilities, uh, Mr. Mooney isn't here. Um, I anticipate we'll get an update on the capital project at the next board meeting. Uh, when I last attended the Facilities meeting, it was like, uh, we thought we were getting inundated with capital project reports, so every other month, uh, we would get a report unless there was something. And one of the concerns was the rising cost of materials, and we got a sales pitch to try to go to a bank first before we get the state had money, but I think you were a little not great on that.
Not now.
So, the, the contractors wanted us to, to grab equipment, but like, the risk would be on us, so...
Oh, I see.
Again, and, um, you know, we're probably going to have it in the future, some reach out to some of our, um, legislators about what to do about, you know, the voters approved the capital project, but then also the cost of some of the materials involved in the capital project double. So, we'd hate to, like, uh, not give the voters what they voted for because the costs suddenly jumped up, and we don't have an answer for that right now.
Didn't they, um, didn't they, uh, account for a certain amount of, like, percentage in the...
They do.
Yeah, they did.
I don't think it's this much.
But it's way past.
I don't think, yeah, it's way out of line, because the, the billing supplies right now are just crazy.
We're just hoping that, you know, as things fluctuate when the bid market, if we hit the bid market next January...
Right.
Because a lot of the work that was planned for this summer, we may...
Absolutely. Okay, gotcha.
And also, maybe the materials will hopefully start to kind of back to normal, is the hope, I guess.
One piece of plywood.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Uh, Policy Committee, uh, you...
Uh, we did not meet today. We are going to meet next Tuesday. We'll be looking at, um, there are some, uh, concerns about the dress code, and we'll be looking at the, um, Wellness Committee, I mean, Wellness Policy. I'm meeting with Lee Malino on Thursday morning to sort of go over that, um, to really make sure that it's sort of an encompassing well-being policy, as well as, um, sort of nutrition and physical, uh, activity is what it traditionally has been, but we have discussed really wanting to make sure that there's, um, language in there that aligns with all the work we're doing around social, emotional health and well-being. And so, next Tuesday at 5:30.
The 15th.
Pay for their flexibility and patience with change in the schedule.
The 15th?
The 15th of June, yes.
What time?
5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Recognition, Mr. Ursic, do we have anybody online?
There are no more public comments.
All right. Um, I will entertain a motion to recess into Executive Session.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gage, second by Ms. Mascall. Any discussion? None being heard, uh, we're going to go into Executive Session. Uh, we don't anticipate coming up to vote on any items, so thank you for attending. Um, we'll be coming up to...